Okay na, sa'yo mam. Nakasalud na mam. Yes, mam? Yes, mam.
Hi, are we in koro na? Koro na ba?
Wala pa, mam.
Pilap.
4 plus... 6 pa, mam.
Ah, 6 pa. Okay, okay. Sige, okay.
Laro?
Yes, sir. Laudan kaila, sir.
Thank you.
Mam, nanay 14 members. 9 online and 5 at decision hall. Nanatay koro, mam.
Okay, uh... To start na. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, the sixth special session of the 20th City Council is now called to order invocation by Honorable Majority Floor Leader Edgar Cavandlas, followed by the singing of Lupang Hinirang and the Kagayan di Oro March. Please rise.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for gathering us today, this afternoon, to tackle on some emergency issues confronting the city of Kagan di Oro. Give us guidance and help us in, uh... this deliberation on what decisions that we would make. We are facing a crisis in the city of Kagan di Oro that would affect the well-being and the lives of our people if, uh, Kubi will insist on cutting off the water supply. We seek your guidance for us members of the City Council on our mayor in making, uh... a correct decision so that we may prevent the consequences of, uh, the action of, uh, Kubi. We beg for your kindness and assistance. Thank you for the life that you have given us. Thank you for the blessings. Thank you for the friendship and, uh... thank you for the day that you have given us today. In the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And please be seated. Okay, good afternoon. Uh, Mr. Secretary, uh, Sir Torres and Miguel, please do the roll call.
Singing patama sa...
Ay, sorry, sorry. I am sorry. Nawala ako's passing. Anyway, uh, singing of the Kagayan di Oro March. Okay, please be seated. And, uh, Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable City Vice Mayor Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan,
Present.
Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual,
Present.
Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno,
Present.
Honorable Romeo V. Calizo,
Present, present.
Honorable George I. Goaking,
Present, present.
Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espasia.
Present.
For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ibuna Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lodes Isgaani,
Present.
Honorable Jalen Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ayan Martínez. Honorable Ian Mark Q. Nakaya, Honorable Idyaris Cavandlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba.
Present.
For the Executive members, Honorable Yan Lam Is Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay President.
Present.
And Honorable Kenneth Jan Di Sakala, City Escape Federation President.
Present.
There is koram, Madam Presiding Officer.
Koram is hereby certified. Uh, good afternoon, happy Labor Day. It's nice to see you again. Uh...
Sumay, pagi ka sa kala oh. Atang ya.
Huh?
Sumay.
Kapikwista, kapikwista.
Ah, kapikwista. Ah, okay. So, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor, Attorney Edgar Cavandlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Our Honorable Presiding Officer Vice Mayor Bibut Rodriguez, Members of the City Council, people who are watching us in their respective social media platforms, members of the media who are also present. We open this session to the public in order for the public to know what's going on and perhaps participate. Uh, this is a... We are making a decision this afternoon, Madam Chair, and thank you for the, for the positive response coming from, from the members of the City Council who readily accepted the request of our City Mayor for a special session by their presence. Uh, we are making a historical action this, uh, this afternoon. We might, we might be judged in the future, but, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I believe that this is based on conscience. And, uh, our conscience is clear that what we're doing now is for the good of the people of Kageyan di Oro, that we are protecting the interests of the people. So, Madam Chair, we have, uh, uh, we have the agenda now and, uh, there are five items that we have included in our agenda. Uh, in the, in the agenda proper, there are only two, but, uh, I requested our secretary, as requested by the mayor. All of these, uh, items in the agenda this afternoon are interconnected with each other, so I consider these items to be only one. So, item number one, Madam Chair, is, uh, ah, yes, uh, but before we proceed with the, uh,
Final agenda.
Tackling the, the, the agenda proper and the proposed resolutions that we would like to pass, we would like to listen to the introduction of Counselor Gurli Balaba before we proceed, Madam Chair. So, may I, may I request that Counselor Balaba be recognized?
Counselor Gurli Balaba, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May hapon sa atong tanan. Um, due to the very short notice, um, I wasn't able to fully prepare my speech, but, um, I will ask all of your indulgence. Not tonight, I will only cite some experts from the articles I read regarding this issue at hand. I researched to quench, to quench my thirst for water wisdom and knowledge in addressing this water crisis we are into presently. So allow me, uh, and to give premise on the reason why we are here tonight, Madam Chair, and, uh, so allow me to read some of them. Number one, governments must take a human rights-based approach to water and sanitation. States are duty bearers of providing water and sanitation services to people who are the rights holders. Rights holders can claim their rights and duty bearers must guarantee their rights to water and sanitation equally and without discrimination. Human right, human rights law demands a proper focus. Duty bearers must direct their interventions to those most in need and develop their capacities to fulfill their obligations. A human rights-based approach also creates a framework for rights holders to participate and to hold duty bearers accountable. Number two, water and sanitation are critical to achieving the sustainable development growth. Leaving no one behind is the central promise of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. A society can only achieve higher rates of public health, gender equity, educational attainment, and economic productivity when all of its members enjoy their rights to water and sanitation. Respect for human rights must be integrated into development plans for all sectors at all levels. Number three, because the right to water is a human right, governments all over the world have the obligation to respect, protect, and fulfill it. Under international law, the Philippine government has the obligation to provide safe, clean, accessible, and affordable water for all. Number four, should a government decide to outsource their service to the private sector, as the Philippines has done by contracting with private concessioners, it effectively becomes responsible for the conduct of those companies in its performance of water services. Thus, using private companies to fulfill the right to water does not absolve the government of its obligation, and it will need to conduct rigorous, rigorous regulation and oversight of the conduct of such companies. Number four, if the private entities are unable to fulfill their public service obligation of providing safe, clean, accessible, and affordable water, the government may be held accountable for any consequences from the outsourcing that are noncompliant with their obligation to uphold the right to water. It is important that Filipinos are aware that access to safe, clean, accessible, and affordable water is their human right, and the Philippine government must be made accountable when this right is not fulfilled. So we have come to this situation, Madam Chair and my dear colleagues. It is a question of profit over human rights, profit over public welfare, profit over public safety, and profit over public security. And as public servants, we must put first and above all else this fundamental right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon.
Thank you very much,ya Counselor Gurli Balaba. Yes, you have the floor again, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cavandlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Gurli, for that beautiful and legal explanation on the issue of what rights. Uh, Madam Chair, may I, may I request that, uh, Turks be allowed to read the first four of the proposed resolution this afternoon as requested by our City Mayor.
Okay. Sir Torres?
For approval, uh, item number one is Proposed Resolution Number 720, urgently requesting the Kageyan di Oro Water District to make an emergency purchase of bulk water supply from the Rio Verde Water Consortium Incorporated, South Balibago Resources Incorporated, GE Hydro and Bioenergy Corporation, Mindanao Cooperative Water Service Federation, and other independent water concessioners to ensure the continued supply and distribution of water in the city in view of the decision of the Kageyan di Oro Bulk Water Incorporated to cease supplying bulk water to COWD effective May 1, 2024. Item two is Proposed Resolution Number 2024-721, earnestly requesting Rio Verde Water Consortium Incorporated, South Balibago Resources Incorporated, GE Hydro and Bioenergy Corporation, Mindanao Cooperative Water Services Federation, and other independent water concessioners in the city to supply bulk water to the Kageyan di Oro Water District. Item three is Proposed Resolution Number 2024-722, adapting Executive Order Number 196-2024 dated May 1, 2024, declaring the city of Kageyan di Oro under the state of emergency and granting its Honorable City Mayor Lando E. O.'s special emergency powers to address the water supply issue in the city.
Uh, so that we can start the discussion, I move for the approval of these three, uh, three resolutions, Madam Chair.
So we're still at one, two, three, right, Majority?
Yes.
So any, any second?
Second.
Any objection?
No, discussion.
Ah, discussion?
Uh, may I say first? Ako sa una? Okay.
Ah, okay. So I cannot, sige, sige, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Majority Floor Leader.
Uh, so that people will know why we are passing these resolutions.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have here a copy of a letter coming from Kageyan di Oro Bulk Water Incorporated, addressed to Rio Verde Water Consortium, Inc., uh, dated April 30, 2024. I would like to read because it is a short message from, uh, from Kubi. Attention, Mr. Benvenido Santos, Chairman, redelivery of minimum contracted water demand. Dear Mr. Santos, we write, we write with respect to the 2022 Bulk Water Supply Agreement, 2022 BWSA, close parenthesis, between Kageyan di Oro Bulk Water Incorporated (KUBI) and Rio Verde Water Consortium, Inc., RBWCI. Due to the failure of Kageyan di Oro Water District (COWD) to comply with its material obligation under its 2017 Bulk Water Supply Agreement with KUBI, despite repeated demands, unfortunately, KUBI is constrained to cease delivering water to COWD effective 12-01 AM on May 1, 2024. Accordingly, pursuant to our agreement and unless otherwise advised, please cease, ndang, from supplying water to COWD until further notice. KUBI will continue to comply with its obligation to pay RBWCI, Rio Verde, the cost of the minimum contracted water demand. Please signify your conformity to the foregoing by signing on the space provided below. Thank you sincerely, Andrew B. Pangilinan, President, Kageyan di Oro Bulk Water Incorporated. This is the, the reason and rationally why we are passing this resolution. Because of this order of KUBA, KUBI, to stop supplying water to COWD, and this directive is addressed to Rio Verde. Madam Chair, uh, it is very unfortunate that, uh, we have this kind of people like KUBI. Uh, that, uh, is so greedy, super, uh... Greed is the, is the reason behind this. Iyo ba nakita nga, nag-iunin ng letter nga, bayran sa KUBI ang Rio Verde, ang tubig ng dili madeliver nga't sa katawan. So, KUBI put emphasis and value to the, to the desire to prevent and deprive the people of Kageyan di Oro from getting this basic commodity which is water. Nakita mo ba, nakita ba na'ton ka, laug nining mga tawanan ni? So, this is my, this is my interpretation. Wala sila magununa kung mga unsa ang mga tao, bayran nila ang Rio Verde, palag nga, matay ang mga tao. Can you imagine the greed of these people? So, Madam Chair, with that basis, we are moving for the, I, we are supporting the approval of these, uh, resolutions unless, uh, yes, we will, we will hear other members of the City Council with their opinions also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cavandlas. Yes, uh, uh, Counselor Ayana Chas, you're raising your hand. You're recognized?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, may hapon sa atong guapa ugutan ng Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bibut Rodriguez to my fellow councilmen and to the, uh, uh, people of Kageyan di Oro. Uh, Madam Chair, no? In the previous days, uh, I believe nga kani nga problema. It was just only a basic and regular problem, magitawag na'to obligations of contracts. Suposid liga mayroon ni siya nga problema, ngaunta ma-kumplay na'to ang obligasyon nga giman do sa'to sa usakka kontrata. Karong gani atong nahebawan, even gani ang luwa, naghatag nag-intervention, nagpatawag siya ugmiting between COWD, between Rio Verde, and other parties, and even in KUBI. Sa atong nadunggan, sa akong nasayran, nga ang KUBI nagtuo sila, nga naay utang ang COWD in the amount of 479 million. Ang COWD usap naginsist, nga naas sila'y utang worth 194 million. But pasabot mga, uh, Madam Chair, nga ang Water District mismo nag-ingon, nga ang among utang dili 479, 194 million. Now, Madam Chair, nakita na ko nga there is an evident bad faith inside of Kageyan di Oro Water District. There is a clear notorious, a plain inclination or predilection to favor one side rather than another. Evident bad faith connotes a palpable and patently dishonest purpose or some moral obligity and conscious doing of a wrong. A breach of sworn duty through some motive or intent or ill will. This is still a self-inflicted emergency. COWD has the money to pay that the KUBI wanted if they only convince their board. Kung ilalanggi meeting, ilanggi patawag ang board and to recognize or acknowledge this debt. Wala tay problema karoon, Madam Chair. Gani wala naesgutan ang terms, kungunta pwidi raman. Nagtuok kung nga ang KUBI, makasabot siya panahon, nga pwidi raman i-star guard or installment ang payment ni Ani, kay nakasabotaon sa kadako. Pero wala, may due process nga naitabo. Ang KUBI is being forced sa ilang touristan to deliver water tungod kay ngaano man magsigit ang supply ang tubig nga di man day kita bayran. Moni ang hin, akong nakita nga kung only lang ang COWD are not negligent, ang mga tao, ang mga members of the board, kung nabati nila unta, ang simple ra kay nga problema. Ngata ang katawan walay labot sa problema ni ini, kay this is just only a mere contract between these two parties. Ngata igu na lang unta, klaro man nga naay bayran nga obligasyon, pero kakadalahig ang katawan. Unsa mangay naas sa Rio Verde, ngaunta mayo naman ang flow sa atong tubig. Ang Rio Verde nag supply sa KUBI, ang KUBI nag supply sa Water District, hunted household. Ngano kakadalahig pa man ang tao, ngano uginsist man na'to ang Rio Verde? Ngayon, in fact, wala man tay crisis sa tubig. From the very beginning, ang atong disgutanan ang obligations of contract. Naay obligasyon nga pag-abayan, dili, but pasabot, kini, mukungklod, nga naay water crisis. Moni akong nakita ngaunta matagan pod ugestis ya ang katawan. Katong mga tao nga involved ni ini nga wala nagpakabana sa obligasyon ang ay usap manubag. Kay nahimo na kininato nga conclusion, na naay water crisis, in fact, we have plenty supply of water only, nga wala lang gituman ang mong obligasyon sa kontrata. Isip membero sa City Council, it is also my obligation to foresee this obligation will not be infringed. Atong katan ahon, atong gabalan siyon. Mone mga, Madam Chair, that I have a few questions, I prepare a few questions. Number one, what is the process of obtaining bulk water supply? Who are the government agencies and regulatory institution involved for the approval of such bulk water supply contract? Number two, how long would it usually take for the approval of the contract? Number three, can Rio Verde or any other bulk water supply directly supply COWD without going to the said process? We all know na naanis sila'y mga existing contracts, makadaritso ba? At any time, pagustuhon na, na sa Rio Verde, namukutay daritso sa, uh, Water District in the premise nga naay emergency. Number four, ang Rio Verde, Rio Verde is also a current supplier of Kobe, for sure they have their own contract and for sure they will have prohibition against Rio Verde indirectly supplying, supplying COWD. If Rio Verde will not respect this contract, it might be liable for breach of contract and will be liable for damages and penalties. So do we have concrete and written commitment of offer from Rio Verde? Then we supply that they will supply COWD? These are few questions nga angay na'to isgutan. So mone akong concerned, Madam Chair, nagpasalamat ko na hataga gigayon, hinautun ta, matagan o kalamdagan for the benefit of the people of Kagayan Dioro. Dagang salamat, ug may gabi sa tanan.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Ayana Chas, yes, any more comment? Uh, Counselor, can sit clearly, Safran?
Counselor James Judith, Madam Chair.
Counselor Attorney James Judith?
And Counselor Moreno is, Counselor Moreno is also raising her hand.
Okay, after, uh, Counselor Attorney James and Counselor Amy Moreno.
Sa atong halandong Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebo Tordillas, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, ang akong mga kauban, tinahad ng mga kauban sa konsyo, sa atong katawan sa nagbayan sa Kagayan Dioro sa inyong tanan, maupay. Niabot na'git ang atong gikadlukan nga matumpawak ta sa usakka sitosyon, nga tininuton ni Kobe, Madam Chair, ang yanghulga nga pangputlan gitah, ugkutay sa tubig, pag abot bali, na dili matuman ang pakias kita sa kasabutan sa kontrobersal nga kontrata ni Kobe o ng Water District. Pero himuon na'to ang tanan nga, ang ayan na'to himuon, kay kinikaroon, nga akitakaroon nga nagtigom, usak kamahinong danon, ug wala pak sukad nga naitabu sa tibok kasaysayan sa atong nagbayan. Ang tubig importante, matod pa, water is life. Matod pa sa usakka panultiyon nga gikan sa United Nations nag-ingon, water is a human right. It needs to be managed as a common good. Considering water as a commodity or as a market opportunity will leave behind those that cannot access or afford the market prices. Kana ang atong pagadumdumon, baliko na ko, water is a human right. Dinin na nakukutob, dagang salamat, ug as dang Kagayan Dioro.
Thank you very much, Counselor Attorney James Judith, yes, Counselor Amy Moreno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, maayong gabi, Honorable Vice Mayor Bebo Tordillas kauban sa twentieth City Council, eh, ug sa tanan na naminaw na nanau sa atuwa, no? Maayong gabi ka na'tong tanan. Actually, Madam Chair, I share the same sentiments and manifestations with, um, Counselor, my Minority Floor Leader, Counselor Ayana Chas, no? I have so many questions and yet until today they are left unanswered. We have been going through this issue for months already. The rift between Kobe and Caudy has been going on for several months, if not a year already. And yet until today, wala pa tay update kung unsay status, unsa may plano sa Caudy. Um, at the end of the day, Madam Chair, as mentioned by Counselor Ayana Chas, um, Caudy Water District had already, um, agreed, no, na naay utang ang Water District. And of course, we always give credit or give importance sa obligation of contract. And that being said, I believe the only solution to this problem that we are facing today is ang Caudy magbayad sa Kobe. And if at all naay mga issues that Caudy would want to raise against Kobe, um, I hope that they take it to Luwa, or I, even if they take it to the higher court, no, Madam Chair, that can be their resort, but not at the expense of the Kagayanons. Kay kita ang karoon ang gasuffer tungod sa dilipag, um, acknowledge ng Water District sa ilahang utang. And secondly, Madam Chair, ako, I've been hearing stories, no, that, um, Caudy and, um, Kobe have had meetings and were mediated by Luwa. Now, thank God, we have Luwa, but unfortunately, we are left unaware kung unsay plano, unsay status, what will happen, what did they agree on, and what is the next move for them? And I hope that we can be given clarification by Luwa, we can be given clarification by Kobe and um, Water District as to their next step. Kay dili naman pwede, Madam Chair, na mag-decide na lang ang Caudy na magpa, na, um, ilahang pasagdan ang kontrata kung naay kontrata. And kita sa council, ang akuha is of course, um, to protect the welfare of our constituents. That is our main, um, kanang tumong, no, diri, but and of course, as to protect the welfare of the Kagayanons, we also must ensure na unsa dili tamagamit sa breach of contract ng Kobe and Caudy. And also, Rio Verde has a pending, has an existing contract with, um, Kobe, which we have no idea kung unsay na, naasa ilahang kontrata, unsay what they agreed on, no? So these are some of the many things that are left unanswered. And yet here we are resorting to the last resort na mag, um, declare taong emergency. Well, in the first case, we were given a deadline. And we were given a deadline, a final deadline of April thirty, but unfortunately, Madam Chair, not a single Board of Director of the Water District had, um, appeared, no, or joined the meeting that was called by the Luwa, the Luwa, which is the governing agency that can be able to mediate whatever issues they have against each other. Now, to me, with the non-appearance of the Board of Directors is a sign of Caudy, Madam Chair, that they have no intention of fixing the said issue. Now, I know that they have important issues, important matters to attend to, but for me, the most important issue that anyone should attend to right now is the issue on supplying water for Kagayanons. And their, their absence sa ilahang meeting just proves to show that, that they don't have any plans of fixing this issue, Madam Chair. And now here we are left, no, to, to push through with this ordinance which in our case, we are left blind kung unsay tinuod na naitabu karoon between Luwa, between Water District and between Kobe. So Madam Chair, ako, para sa akuha, before I even approve of any ordinance, I want to be clear and sure of what ordinance for the purpose of our ordinance. Kay in this case, ang atuwang ordinance, um, it makes me also question, what is the stand of the local government of Kagayan Dioro when it comes to the arrangement or the deal, the contract between the Water District and Kobe? Are we not honoring the contract? Is the local government of Kagayan Dioro not honoring the contract? And if so, if we're not going to honor the contract, Madam Chair, I don't want to be an accessory, no, to a breach of contract. Because in the first place, kung kita muapil ka sa problema sa Water District, ug sa, sa Kobe, um, actually, wala tay labot sa ilahang kontrata, no? Pero kung muapil ang local government of Kagayan Dioro, it is to ensure that they will be able to protect their relationship with one another because there is an existing contract. So, um, kanalang, Madam Chair, I just hope that there should there be clarification on this said. But again, Madam Chair, ang akuha, um, not for anyone else, not for anything, but if we push through with this ordinance, will we be solving an issue, the grave issue? Or are we just adding salt to injury? Kay basin mo daku ang issue na ay casual, cases will be filed left and right among the three of them, and mahimong kita ang accessory instead of us putting off the fire or nipping it off the bug. So dagang salamat, Madam Chair, ug mayong gabi ka na'tong tanan.
Dagang salamat, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Amy Moreno, yes?
Counselor, Counselor Abu, Counselor Alam Lim and Counselor Balaba are raising their hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, then next is Counselor Alam Lim, then Counselor Gurli Balaba. You have the floor, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. I the, the opinions of the members of the City Council are, to ma, to me, are all valid. Opinion of Counselor Chas, Counselor Moreno, Counselor Balaba, Judith. Um, sa ako pong point of view, Madam Presiding Officer, is that, uh, that is correct, this is this problem, this dilemma really started with the contractual obligations of the parties, but, uh, katong sa una gina-negotiate ni siya nga in the hopes na ma-oke ni siya, but now there is this really imminent danger that we have, we are facing right now. Uh, due to the letter, um, submitted by Kobe to the Rio Verde advising them to cut supplies, uh, supply of water to the, to the COWD. And, uh, sa ako lang, Ani, Madam Presiding Officer, I think it, my personal opinion, um, this local government unit, through this resolutions, this is not an ordinance, Madam Presiding Officer, but a resolution. A resolution is a mere expression of the body. The, the resolution is only requesting the, these parties, these entities to supply water considering on the basis that, uh, uh, che-tawag ni Ani kining, Kobe has already sent a letter to Rio Verde to stop the supply. And since there is this danger already, which as far as I know, uh, some areas in the city have already, is already experiencing, uh, low pressure to no pressure at all. And I think, uh, what we are trying to, what we are trying to do now is to make the necessary steps to, to prevent and to make sure that supply of water is available to everybody. Despite the fact that there is this contractual obligation problems between the parties. Uh, with that, Madam Presiding Officer, I'd like to manifest my support to these resolutions. And with just one question, addressed to perhaps the Majority Floor Leader, uh, supposing that this contract between the, between Rio Verde, I'm sorry, uh, between Cau, Kobe and COWD would be settled amicably between them, uh, what would happen to these resolutions that we will be issuing? That's just my main question, but as to the intention and purpose of this resolution, uh, this is just a mere expression of the body, I would manifest to support this. But with the such question addressed to the Majority, perhaps to the Majority Floor Leader, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, yes, you have the floor, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, uh, Counselor Joey. Sa dipanagotobagun, uh, Madam Chair, dili mani about legalities of the contract, we're not talking about the who is, who is wrong and who is right. What we are talking here is that there is a crisis, there is a pending uh, stoppage of supply of water, and that is the main issue here. We are not siding with anybody. We're not saying that Kobe is correct or Water District is correct. What we are saying is that we want the people of Kagayan Dioro not to be jeopardized because Kobe will stop supplying water, that's all. Uh, on the question of Counselor Joey, of course, uh, I do not know, uh, exactly what would be the effect of, uh, this, uh, this now, this, uh, this supplies coming from the other sources. What would happen if there will be a settlement between Kobe and the Water District? But as far as I am concerned, I think there is already a, there is already cancellation of that contract. Kay gipahunong naman sa Kobe ang supply. That means nga, nagpasabot ka na, ang adina sila, wala na sila, nagti-bulaag na sila, nagbulag na sila. And, uh, but, kung may tabo, gud nga mo magkasitor sila. Then, uh, of course, addis, uh, other suppliers will understand. Kasabot ni sila, nga, sagitawag na'to mga sitosyon, emergency kininga sitosyon. Ato sila ang gihanyo, nga at this point in time, na ang crisis, na ang dakong nga posibilidad nga ma-ig, maigo ang katawan sa Kagayan Dioro, naghangi kita nga, matabang sila, diya bagre. So, murana, Madam Chair, thank you very much, uh, sa Joey.
Thank you very much, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor, now Counselor Alam Lim.
Uh, Madam Chair, mayang gabi, Madam Chair, mayang gabi sa mayang gabi sa atong mga kauban, kaling special siyon. Madam Chair, ang ato, I go with the majority, no, ayang explanation, patshada gaya explanation. Actually, dili, kita is only murag recommendation. Ano masabta sa tao, ang diparin siya maguna, Ani, katong previous contract, nakita logan niya, dili man ingon ang utang, dili ka bayran. But if we are going to pay the obligation, uh, utang sa Kobe, sa Wat, uh, sa Water District, we are already recognizing the contract which is previous, recognize the contract which is the previous contract na, naay defective. Ang defective maguna, Anna, ang katawan mo saper, no, sa, the part as I read the contract, is every three years na increase which impact, mga ka-involves sa atong katawan, sa atong mga exuon nga, sa kadaplina, no, mga, uh, Madam Chair. Dili man problema sa pagbayad, dili mo bayad ang, uh, Water District because of that increase. First of all, mulagi nagiaawayan nilang, uh, konsial, akong nabati, silang konsial irek sa sido, silang bunglaw. Sa una nga panahon, dapat ipagawas na'to ng contract, dili na'ta maabot karoon nga panahon sa kagobot. Kay kung naay disadvantage, at least mga Board of Directors, which is appointed by the city, can na unsay gusto sa atong kuwan, uh, council i-recommend sa mayor, dili na maabot karoon nga panahon. Dili, sa tungod sa utang nga dili ka bayran, ano masabta sa tao? Once you recognize na bayran tong utang, you, you are already recognizing the previous contract. Ano masairan, ma-previous contract, it means to say, padayon na'to, every three years increase ta, increase kesa may magsak, sa saper, ang katawan, Madam Chair. So, ang ako is, uh, kanang hi-himuni, uh, gay, one of the majority, I go with the majority, kay isa'to ginayang. We are just, uh, giving a resolution to help mo, pwede masitor nila between Kobe and Water District. Ano masairan, dili ingon tungod kay dili bayran ang utang, once we pay the obligation, we are already recognizing the previous contract. The previous contract, kung namin nagsupak na sa una nga panahon, eh, wala ipagawas karoon pa man na ipagawas ang contract. That's all, ang good evening.
Thank you very much, Counselor Alam Lim, then the next, next one is Counselor Gurli Balaba.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, also I would like to, ano, agree with Counselor Alam Lim and Counselor and our Majority Floor Leader, no, we, we, we are taking action sa unsay problema karoon at, the problem at hand. No, naatay mga katawan nga, na peligrosong nga, mawad ang tubig. So ang ato diha So, ang ato diha, inasmuch as we would like to dissect the contracts between Kaudi, Kubi, and, uh, Metro Pac, and Rio Verde, dilin, ano na na siya, uh, ato sanang i-set aside, kaya ang ato, kailangan na aksyonan karoon panahon, ang kining katauhan ato nga mawad-an ug tubig, tungod kay sa hulga, sagihim, uh, naghimo sa Kubi, no, ngat ilahang, um, putlon ang supply sa water. But, unsa ang ilahang katungod, nga putlon nila ang tubig. Wala sila katungod. It does not even exist or stipulated in the contract. So, when you say breach of contract, breach of contract, wala'y kontrata na kasipulate, na if there are any disputes among there, uh, sa ilahang partido o sa ilang parties, on, in, any parties, ang katung Kaudi or Kubi will stop the water supply, wala sa kontrata. Ang pag-dispute is, they will settle their dispute sa, as atong Singapore Court. Murato dito, dito na, murato. So, arbitration, Singapore Court. Wala tay labot dito kung gusto sila maabot sa korte. Ang ato, dari, dilin na to tugtan nga, ato mga katauhan, mawad-an ug tubig.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Gurly Balaba. Anybody raising their hand?
Counselor Nakaya and Counselor Abadai are raising their hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor, then Counselor Roger Abadai.
You have no objection, Counselor Nakaya?
Okay, how, how's this coming, uh, sir?
Uh, laden clear, sir. Laden clear na, sir.
Banonggan ko?
Yes, sir, laden clear na.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the recognition, uh, of Vice Mayor and the Presiding Officer. There is a well established that, uh, our role as a, an elec-, as elected officials, we are all, uh, declared and supposedly act on behalf of the people who needs protection. And, uh, that legal maxim is known as parents' patri. Parents' patri means, uh, it's an established rule that, uh, we should protect the interest that will fair for those who have no, for nothing to show, or that for them to respond to, react to on the basis of threat, emergency, or crisis. And, uh, as thread by the Majority Leader, that, uh, there is a communication that reveals, among others, directing the supplier of Kubi to stop or to provide only the minimum, uh, water provision. It means that our people would be victims of the insufficiency, much more, no supply of water soon. That is why the city mayor has, uh, asked the City Council and has declared on his own volition that, uh, there is a state of emergency because it's very urgent, Madam Presiding Officer. And parents' patri would tell us, we are elected, it is our authority, and we should act on behalf of the people who needs protection. So, that's all, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. And we have also now Counselor Roger Abadai, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Juslin Bibo Rodriguez, my colleagues in the Twin Cities City Council, and for those people who are listening to us today, especially sa mga consumers. Paghawa na ko sa balay, dito sa kinarag, daghan na kayo na gab, uh, bit-bit ug drum ug mga lata, kaya nab, daku kayo kabalaka, sa, kiningay moon sa, uh, Kubi. Now, niabot na guyon ang panahon nga, sa inyo pumutana po dila, uh, sessions nga, who knows that Kubi will cut off the supply of water? Naon, yano magini. So, na lagang na ta, diwa? So, anyway, dinatuna, listen, kaya this is, uh, uh, emergency, it needs immediate action. Uh, kit, na kita nibodya sa Water District, we talk, water is life, uh, water is life. Remove water for few days, we, people will die, we all die. Kini pung Kubi, dun na po siya eh, social responsibility, dilin lang kay, uh, they'll just do business, no? Multi-billioner ang kining mga tagiya sa Kubi, but didonatno, that until now, kasigil sila hadol-hadol dia sa problema nila, is unfair for us, consumers. Gabayad, ya punta regularly and religiously sa tubig, wala tamapalta. Dilin na to na responsibility sa consumer ang kanang, uh, ang kanang, uh, responsibility sa Water District dapat. While they are settling the dispute, dilis na nila patyon ang pilaka libo, pilaka almost more than millions of people of Cagayan de Oro. Wala, wala una na, so munang wala, siguro ma, unain na ay sa, uh, Kubi. Uh, so, under the power of the state to look a power manang ang guberno, in case of, uh, emergency, ang guberno can exercise, one of its strongest power is the police power. That is what the chief prosecutor now and we, the City Council, are trying to assert against, uh, the supplier, box supplier, and to defend our people of Cagayan de Oro to starve of water akong buhaton nila na, pilaka uraskaron. So, this is an inherent power, kini police power, this is an inherent power, a preliminary power in the state which enables to prohibit all things harmful to the comfort, safety, and welfare of the society. So, limtang sa nanang, ato sa nanang midyo, relax sa nanang to na, kung sae balao dia, importante, we will be, uh, removed from, uh, discomfort, huh, and, uh, starving, uh, water, no? So, this power that we are trying to assert now is to promote public welfare by restraining and regulating liberty or property through legitimate means. Is it legitimate? Mayu bani atong gabuhaton? Of course, we are saving people of Cagayan de Oro. That is why, uh, we are asking the, we are asking, authorizing now, uh, the Water District, that we can secure, that we can secure, uh, bulk water from, uh, the supplier guyon kanang ga, supply sa Kubi. So, that is what, uh, uh, what, what, I think that is what, what, what the intent of this, uh, special, special session of the Twin Cities City Council today, authorizing the, uh, City Water District to procure emergency of water for the welfare and safety and, uh, health of, uh, the people of Cagayan de Oro. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor, uh, Roger Abadai. Yes, anybody, any more comments?
Counselor Moreno is raising her hand again, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Amy Moreno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you again for the opportunity. Actually, Madam Chair, um, ang akong appeal is very simple, no? Ang akong appeal is for the Water District, um, to finish this issue. Kaya karoon, kita ang na-moblema tumod sa problema sa Water District. And I understand that we have to do this emergency. We are told to do this, um, resolution for that emergency purchase, pero ang aqua is only the Water District can solve this issue. And unfortunately, at the expense of the Cagayanons, ang appeal ko lang, Madam Chair, is for the Water District to be firm with its stand and to do what is right for the people. Kung kita na-moblema para sa katauhan, unta ang Water District, Madam Chair, um, ang ilang hunahon-hunahon is welfare sa katauhan sa Cagayan de Oro. They can easily, Madam Chair, finish this issue. Unfortunately, with all the meetings that were scheduled for them to, to, um, that were set, no, with Kubi, never did they show up in any of these meetings. This has been going on for months, that's what I have heard, no? And lastly, karoon, just recently, just yesterday, I think, Madam Chair, was there meeting with Water District, and they did not show, they did not make an attempt, no, the Board of Directors did not make an attempt to show up in this meeting, which again are left sa ato ang councilors, na if kita dilin mag-agree sa emergency purchase, mahimutang bilin in this whole scenario. Well, in fact, Madam Chair, ang aqua is ang appeal for the Water District and luwa to come out and tell us the real story. Ngano, dilin nila gusto na, um, they do not want to settle this issue with Kubi. So, kana lang, Madam Chair, um, dagang salamat.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Amy Moreno. Yes, any more, uh?
Counselor Swan is raising his hand, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Agas Swan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In item number three, we discussed about special emergency powers. Can we specify what these special emergency powers are?
Are you, uh, are you, uh, directing your question to the Majority Floor Leader?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabalas, you have the floor.
I think, uh, everybody was furnished copy of the executive order, and they are stated here. Dun na bumay kopya sa executive order?
Uh, I have not received any copy, Madam Chair.
Uh, it,
The email.
According to towards, email daw kaya sa inyo, sa ato tanan.
Okay, but even then, Madam Chair, the question is, yeah, what specific emergency powers, Madam Chair?
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Edgar Cabalas.
Section two, intervention, uh, for the information of Counselor Swan. Intervention, this is, are the powers of the mayor. The City Government Cagayan de Oro shall make the following steps or intervention to mitigate the effects of the cutting off of the bulk water supply of Cagayan de Oro bulk water to Cagayan de Oro Water District. To which, the incident management team shall immediately conduct a rapid damage assessment and needs analysis to determine the impact of the cutting off of the bulk water supply of Cagayan de Oro to Cagayan de Oro Water District. To immediately, number two point two, to immediately implement under the direction and supervision of the incident management team, the contingency plan submitted by the Cagayan de Oro Special Task Force for water supply and distribution as created under Executive Order number one zero nine, that's twenty twenty four. To rest, and to, um, number two point three, to request the City Council to enact a resolution adapting the recommendation to declare the state of emergency of City Cagayan de Oro due to the cutting off of the water supply of Kubi to Cagayan de Oro Water District. So, these are the intervention nga, ngano nga, uh, na, na-akining executive order. And the City Council is merely supporting this and adapting this executive order uh, to give legislative fiat to the action of our city mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabalas, yes? Any more, anybody raising their hands, Sir Torres?
Counselor Abadai, Madam Chair.
Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized?
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Madam Presiding Officer. I would like to disabuse the minds of the member of the City Council that, 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 that did mean that we authorize the City Water District to procure, uh, emergency water for Cagayan de Oro. Does not mean that they will not continue to settle their obligation to, uh, Kubi. So, while they are settling this, uh, issue, the issue, then people should have, uh, uh, should have live without water, dilin kay, magsigilan taong, piribas lamaga, lalis na diya, naputlan taong, uh, tubig. So, it's unfair for the consumer because the consumer, until now, we are paying water. Only, nalay ilang utang sa duha, ngano, idilahig man ang millions of consumers nga, religiously, gabayad man ta. So, unta ang Kubi, dun ay kasing-kasing, dun na siya social responsibility, dilin kay maningil sa utang, iyang dalahigon ang millions of people of Cagayan de Oro. Munay atong, munay atong purpose, we are trying to save the people of Cagayan de Oro from, uh, the plan of, uh, Kubi to cut off the water supply for us in Cagayan de Oro. Limtang sa na to ng mga, uh, kutsay legalitida, atong importante, ang tao dun ay tubig, ugma ugkaron pilaka uraskaron kung putlan ta, ugpadayon, diwa? Uh, in an emergency, uh, situation, wala sae balao, di, sa na to, tanaw na, ato sang siguro nga mabue, ang millions of people in Cagayan de Oro. Salamat.
Thank you very much, Counselor Roger Abadai. Yes, any more raising their hand?
Uh, Madam Chair, may move to, uh, to, to stop the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, discussion tourly.
Okay.
Bottom line here is that, we are not saying who is guilty, we are not saying that, uh, as representative of the people, at least, we have, we have the obligation to help. And this is what we're doing now. So, I, oh, si Vice Mayor, to,
Karako? I do not touch my touchscreen, kaya mo paong niya, I'm so ignorant with you.
So, I move for the approval of these three resolutions. Jurit, Jurit seconded.
Any second?
Second.
Objection? I hear none?
There's, there's an abstention, Madam Chair, Counselor Atchas.
Okay, so abstention, Counselor Atchas, who else?
Me, Madam Chair, Amy Moreno.
Okay, Counselor Amy Moreno, who else?
Madam Chair abstain, Madam Chair.
Abstain, Counselor Agas Swan. Who else? No more?
No more, Madam Chair.
Okay, so motion is hereby carried. Proceed, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor.
Move to approve, second and final reading with the same number of votes.
Any second?
Second.
With the same number abstain, motion is hereby carried. Proceed.
Now, uh, Madam Chair, item four, Propose Solution Number Twenty Twenty Four, seven to three, urging the management of Cagayan de Oro, de Oro Bulk Water Inc., or Kubi, Metro Pacific Water, and Mr. Andrew Pangilinan, Kubi President, to explain to this body why this should not be declared as persona non grata in the City of Cagayan, uh, Cagayan de Oro for its decision to cut off the bulk water supply to Cagayan de Oro Water District, subject to styling, Madam Chair.
Any second? Any objection? Abstention? Sir Torres, is there any abstention?
Counselor, Counselor Atchas is abstaining, Madam Chair.
Counselor Atchas, who else?
Counselor, Madam Chair.
Counselor Amy Moreno, who else?
Counselor Swan, Madam Chair.
Counselor Agas Swan, who else? No more?
No more.
So, motion is hereby,
Counselor Imano is also abstaining, Madam Chair.
Counselor Iba Imano, you abstaining, so we have four abstention, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, and second and final reading.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection, abstention?
Yes, same vote.
Same abstention, number abstention, right?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion is hereby carried.
Last item, Madam Chair. Propose Solution Number Twenty Twenty Four, that's seven to four, requesting the commission on audit, or KUA, to look into the contract between the Cagayan de Oro Water District, COWD, and the Cagayan de Oro Bulk Water Incorporated, Kubi, subject to styling. Move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second? Any second?
Second.
Objection? Abstention?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Amy Moreno, abstention, who else?
Chair, no, Madam Chair, no.
Oh, no, no, no. So no abstention this time?
No abstention.
No abstention, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Second.
Second.
Objection?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yes, I would just, might have inquiry lang, Madam.
Okay, Counselor Amy Moreno, inquiry?
Yes, Madam Chair, ako, I'm agreeable to the request sa COA. But however, with the contract between the Water District and COWD, I believe the proper governing agency that we should request to look into, should look into is Lua. May we also request that a report be given by Lua as to the status or the arrangement between the District and the Cagayan Duro Bulk Water Inc.
Ah, Madam Chair, can I, can I respond to that?
Okay, sure.
It would be improper to include Lua as an investigating body because Lua might be involved also in this transaction, so.
Ah, okay. So are you amendable to that?
Yeah.
The Counselor Amy Moreno?
Um, may I ask, Madam Chair?
Yes?
If Lua is the governing agency or the governing body, may I ask what issues we have with Lua? Because we relying on Lua for their recommendation in the Water District.
Madam Chair, let us wait for that investigation by the commission audit before we can answer that question.
Ah, okay, sige, okay. So anyway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Amy Moreno. Any second? Objection? No abstention, is there any abstention? None?
None, Madam Chair.
Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second and final reading, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Objection, abstention, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
So thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for, to the members of the city council for being here and thank you for the, our chair, our chairperson, our presiding officer. There being no other matters to take up, move for adjournment, Madam Chair.
Session adjourned, God bless us all, see you tomorrow, ah? Have a good night.
See you.
See you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.